Good evening, everyone. Tonight is the Town Council Regular Meeting, Wednesday, June 17th, 2020. We are go-to meeting, and at this point, we will also the pledge. A pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And everybody that's on the call, keep everything muted until your speaking, because I'm going to be present with a lot of the feedback that we get on these paths. And we move on to number two is the visitor section. At this point, are there any visitors who would like to be recognized?
Yes, I would like to be recognized as a visitor.
Okay, state your name, please.
My name is Mackenzie Blanasa, and I wrote something that I'd like to say. On June 7th, we held a peaceful protest against police brutality and in support of the Black Lives Matter movement. Hundreds of people gathered at the Abraham Pearson School front lawn and stood in solidarity with this movement. We listened to the speeches and experienced it from over a dozen people from our community that clearly showed racism and prejudice exist in Clinton, even though many people like to believe it does not. In the days following the protest, we created a Clinton BLM group on Facebook that now has approximately 500 members. Clinton BLM is a place where we can continue the discussion and see what kinds of changes people would like to see in our community. One of the first things we would like to see is acknowledgement and acceptance of the proclamation of solidarity that Christine Gupeal drafted. This proclamation was proposed to be on the agenda tonight, but was denied because of belief that it is a personal matter. Nothing about this is personal, and it's very alarming that certain leaders of our community feel that it is. The Black Lives Matter movement has ignited the largest civil rights movement in history. There have been protests in all 50 states and across international borders. I don't understand how anyone could say this is a personal matter when the whole world is screaming for change. As a predominantly white suburban town, it is our duty to speak up and show that we are an ally to all people of color. Therefore, we need to adopt the proclamation of solidarity, and I think we should form a diversity and inclusion committee for our town so we can follow through with the changes our community would like to see.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would also like to address the Town Council. My name is Dan Hua. I just wanted to talk also about the denial of Ms. Gupeal's draft on the agenda. Because when I got the call and was told what happened today, I was absolutely appalled, and I still am. I'm at a loss of words. I'm extremely disappointed with the lack of leadership in some of our town's political figures, and being able to ignore this problem and everything that's going on, that's privilege, and being able to turn down this draft, that's privilege. And no statement or PR move is going to be enough, because the only step towards achieving change in our town to me is addressing this draft in the Town Council meeting.
Anyone else who would like to be recognized?
Yes, I would like to be recognized.
Okay, state your name, please.
My name is Raven Madigan. I've been a Clinton resident for the last six years, and I'm here to voice my support for the proclamation of solidarity as drafted by Christine Gupeal. In light of current events across the country and as well as events in recent years, I feel that as a resident of Clinton, it is important that we make a definitive statement against the injustices such as racism, homophobia, and sexism, no matter where they occur, and that as a town and community, we commit ourselves to ensuring that our marginalized and underrepresented community members know for a fact that their town leadership supports them and will not turn a blind eye to the injustices that plague our country. I urge our Town Council to adopt the proclamation of solidarity and work to include the diversity conversation in the ongoing talks.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I would like to be recog-
Okay.
Eli Phelps, Clinton resident for my whole life. I was educated here K-12. My voice of support to the people who preceded me, I don't understand how a movement this important isn't aligning them on the town's agenda.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? Okay, then we move on to number three. And just so you know, this will be discussed under Chairman's comments, under the Chairman's report, so we will have a response to this and let you know how it had to be done, so that I wish and hope everybody stays on the path, so that we can hear that as well. Number two would be the prayer of the minutes for the June 3rd, 2020 meeting. Have a motion to approve.
Moved. Tim.
Second.
Any discussion? All favor.
Aye.
Post. Upstand. Thank you. And moving on to the amendments, first number, the reappointments. So we can just walk through these with Palatini and an affiliated and the design review board for term until 6:30, 2023. We have an email from Mr. David Deterrey, so at this point, I would accept the motion to reappoint Palatini to the design review board until term of 6:30, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Upstand? Thank you all. And move on to Catherine Zemec, again, an affiliated conservation commission for a term of 6:30, 22. Again, we have the email from her stating that she wishes to continue on the conservation mission. So at this time, look for a motion to, uh, to, uh, affiliated to the conservation commission for a term until 6:30, 22.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
And favor.
Aye.
Upstand? Thank you. And then we come down to the appointments. So under the appointment for the 12 o'clock, 12 o'clock for the tree committee until a term of 6:30, 2021. Again, we have a letter from Andrea that is endorsing going for the appointment to the tree committee. At this point, I would say for the motion to appoint Terry Clark to the tree committee for a term until 6:30, 2021.
I'll make that motion, Tim.
Second.
Second.
And favor, any discussion? All favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Upstand? Next is Daniel Huwett, WPCC. This would be for a term that begin, that will begin on 7/120, for a term until 6:30, 23. And a letter from Andrea has been sent to us for his consideration for more. So at this point, motion to appoint Daniel Huwett to the WPCC for a term beginning on 7/120, for a term until 6:30, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Upstand? Thank you. Congratulations, Daniel. The man, Mackenzie Banza, an affiliated Indian Wetlands Commission alternate seat for a term until 6:30, 23. We have an email from Pundit, and so at this point, for motion to appoint Mackenzie as an affiliated to the Indian Wetlands Commission, I'll alternate seat for a term until 6:30, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
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 Any discussion? All favor.
Aye.
Post. Upstand? Thank you. All right, so moving on to number five, which is the Liberty Green Historic District Revised Ordinance and Town Historian Ordinance. We had the public hearing earlier tonight for a rapid two minutes, and we had one of the people speak in favor at the public hearing, and no other members of the public were at the public hearing. So at this point, I would for motion for us to approve the ordinance and add on the Liberty Green Historic District Revised Ordinance and Town Historian Ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All favor.
Aye.
Upstand? Thank you very much. On to number six, which is the financial reports and all line item transfers. Sue, Sue.
Yep. Hi, good evening, everyone. Okay, a quick review of the financials. The revenues, the tax revenues are a little better made than they were in April, but they're still lagging, which is basically the same with all the other departments. All the state revenues budgeted now have been received. Overview, the expenses, mainly just salary-related expenses are in the departments. They're tracking along with the dollars previously forecasted by the departments. No change in the previous forecast. Overall department overages and shortfalls have not changed significantly that we've been previously reported to you, and they're all indicated in the detailed write-up. The investment reports, we have about $23 million of available cash at the end of May. Interest income is $112,000 through May. It was additional $4,000, same as the previous month for the interest income. The pro forma balance sheet reserves and contingency have not changed from previously reported. Continency still remains at $117,000. I would like to move on to the capital forward request section of my report, if anyone doesn't have any comments so far. Okay, as mentioned in the last month's meeting, there's an existing Capital Town Fund policy statement that states appropriations only have a two-year life and expire at the conclusion of the second year as of June 30th. This means that any capital project appropriated for fiscal year '21, they are automatically carried forward, but projects appropriated prior to fiscal year '20 now need approval to be carried forward by the Town Council. If the project is not approved to be carried forward, it's either you're going to be closed, or the funds are then transferred back to the general fund, or they are to be re-appropriated to other projects. So in your packets, you were provided a list of the capital projects that were identified as two years old or greater. These projects were reviewed by the department heads and discussed with the town manager, and a determination as to which ones are being requested have been identified, and as of today, the number is $395,000 worth of projects. These projects will be updated as we close out the fiscal year. Attached to that same sheet also in your package provides more details on those projects, including the original appropriation date, the original dollar amount, reason for the request of the extension, and anticipated date of the project being closed. The projects that are not being recommended to be carried forward are also listed on the sheet, and if you got the color version, they're in red, and they total $41,000. And the reason that these projects are recommended to be closed, either they came in under budget, or the projects, the funds are no longer needed. These projects are recommended to be closed, and the funds are being requested to be transferred to be used for another town project for the town hall stage roof repairs, which is a capital project that's currently not budgeted. Of that capital, of that town hall stage roof project is a total of $60,000, of which this $41,000 would be a portion of that. The remaining balance of 18 on that project is going, recommended to be transferred from the town infrastructure account. Both of those transfers are included in tonight's line item transfer request being presented. So if you have any questions on the projects themselves, Carl's familiar with all the projects and can provide any further information. What I would, am asking the council to do is to approve these projects that are listed to be carried forward, and that also that the projects that are recommended to be closed, the funds be used to be transferred to the appropriation from the town hall stage. So there's a lot of information, but if you have any questions or comments on that?
And Sue, you said our next update will be at the end of the fiscal year, July 1st. I think that's the next time we meet.
Well, we wouldn't be getting an update on these projects, but that's just to say that what we typically do is we ask to have the names of the projects carried forward, because knowing that the dollar amounts will be changing.
Okay. Anyone else have questions for Sue? So at this point, I guess if we can open up a motion for us to motion to approve the line item transfer and capital carry forward request as presented by Sue.
I'm sorry, what?
Again, Carl.
I had a hard time understanding what you said, Chris.
A motion to approve the line item transfer and the capital carry forward request as presented by Sue.
All right, second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Stand. Thank you, Sarah.
But can I just move into, can we do, would you like to do the line item transfers that were also presented for the remainder of them? Would you like to do those at this time?
Yes. Yep.
Okay, so if I can be clear, the first transfer is to transfer the $41,090 to the town hall stage roof replacement project and to take it away from those funds that are being closed.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All favor.
Aye. Aye.
Upstand? Thank you.
Okay, the second transfer is to $18,910 to the same project, the town hall stage roof, and take it out of the fiscal year '20 town infrastructure project. That will make the total project $60,000.
I'll make that motion.
I'll move. Okay, second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I just want to say, I was at the Public Works meeting last night, and they discussed that this was the last flat roof at the town hall that needed repair. They have now investigated and repaired all the flat roofs that were in need, and the next thing that they will look at will be the slate roof, and that will be a much simpler, less expensive repair, because that's a matter of identifying slates that need to be replaced and doing those individually. It's not a big blanket project like these flat roofs are. So it's good news that this final area is being addressed, and it's also good news that the other necessary repairs aren't going to be, they don't predict them to be very extensive at all.
Thank you, Carl.
Okay, the next line item transfer request is from the police department, and-
I don't think we approved that. I don't think we said aye yet.
No, I'm sorry. That last motion.
Aye. We have, we had a motion in a second, right, and then discussion?
Yeah.
Yeah.
This is the discussion. Yeah, all favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, the next, the next one is from the police department, and what the chief is doing is covering the police Mako salary lines and communication overtime and police general supplies overruns in his budget as of this time of year. The detail is on the transfer. He's putting money into the communications, $46,550, so supplies, $1,016, payroll, $26,118, and Mako, $2,0427. I won't go through the rest of the detail, if you don't mind. It's in front of you. This will cover most of the overruns in his three departments. There still will be a transfer required into the communications department to can cover the salaries and overtime line items that he's been forecasting that he would be over. But this is taking care of a good majority of his that are currently exist.
A motion to approve?
So moved.
Second? We got a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post. Upstand? Thank you. Thanks.
Okay, the next line item transfer is for the Parks and Recreation, and it's to balance their budget. They're putting money into their repairs and maintenance, $3,098, and then $800, and also travel expense, $1,015, and then another $1,000, and then general maintenance, $550. And they're taking the money out of their family day accounts and other supplies and maintenance. On the read, I asked them to tell me what their explanations are, and they said they had to upgrade some electrical service at the town beach due to breakers tripping. And in Peters and Indian River, there were lightning strikes that caused electrical surges that damaged the scoreboard and electrical boxes. They also had to repair and replace an electrical conduit that was vandalized. And they also had some, the beach bathrooms had to be fixed when they opened them up, and the mileages because the was unbudgeted this year. So the total of their transfer request is $6,598 into those accounts and out of the other ones that are noted.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Second, seconds, whatever.
Any discussion?
I just have a question whether some of those expenses can be covered by insurance. I don't know what the total amount was for the damage that was done and whether or not that would be something that would be covered.
Dollar amounts don't penetrate the deductible, so there would be no insurance recovery. Anybody else? Okay, all favor?
Aye.
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 Post. Upstand? Thank you.
Okay, the next, the next one is youth and family. This is to cover the mileage in their department, which again was not budgeted, just like all the departments, and is for $1,400, and they're taking it out of other supplies. Their mileages for attending conferences and education and support services to some clients and things like that.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just a general question. I know that there was conversation earlier at the end, or actually the beginning of the fiscal year regarding grants and whether some of those expenses were allocated in the correct place. So I'm just wondering whether the mileage was attributed to any of the grants and making sure that youth and family did have the ability to put them towards it.
They did. We did. This is all outside of grants. We went and made that adjustment. Yes, any mileage that they have for grants, they do charge it. So this is totally outside of the grants. Yeah, thank you.
Anyone else? All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post. Upstand? Thank you.
Okay, the next one is for the water pollution control, and this is to cover additional well monitoring testing that they did, and also some travel, $829.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
I know their well testing, the, the level of testing that they needed did not decline, but the cost of the testing is very much more than it's been a year past. And there is no other company that does this, so that's the increase in their fees.
Second.
Second.
Any other discussion? All favor?
Aye.
All right.
Upstand? Thank you.
Okay, DPW, it's a request for a total of $669, again, travel expenses and some new, an overrun in their clothing allowance.
That is a good point.
So moved.
Second. If not, we got a second?
I just asked a question as well. I think the clothing allowance was that related to the union contracts, because we were concerned that staff wasn't getting the appropriate footwear, and therefore, we had requested through the union contract that they actually upgrade their footwear on a yearly basis.
I don't, I don't have a specific answer as to why they had a total overrun. I can find out and get back to you on that.
Any other comments? All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Upstand? Thank you.
And the last one, I believe, it was included in your packet, even though it's under $500, but since it is my department, I think it wanted to be included, and I was just requesting a transfer of into travel for $95. It was my travel to attend the learn meetings during the year, and then we took out of dues and fees some money to cover some general supplies for our year-end. Binders, bankers' boxes, manila folders, and et cetera. That was a $435 transfer. Good?
All favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you, Sue.
And thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, we'll move on to number seven, which is the Town Council Report. I will start with a letter from the State Department for the town, and we had the public head, Carl Kilgoff, manager of the Town of Connecticut. Mr. Kilgoff, on behalf of the Connecticut Department of Public Health and the American Heart Association, congratulations to your community for having met the renewed requirements of a designated health safe community. This three-year designation, effective April 30th, 2020, recognizes your community's continued commitment to provide improved cardiac response and care to the residents of your community utilizing their quote-unquote chain of survival of A111 access, cardio pulmonary resuscitation, defibrillation, and advanced care. We commend you on your efforts to continue to save lives and improve the health of your community sincerely, deardrop S. Clifford, MD, NPH Acting Commissioner. So congratulations to the county, and to all of our emergency service people in town for that and for all the hard work. And next, I would like to just again give a big thank you out to Super Community or the administration, Eric the Grelvin, the Board of Education, the PTA, the Morgan Alumni Association for all the efforts that they put forth for the graduation services that they, that they had last week. And it went wonderful. It was great that the kids got something, and you know, proud that the town came out, supported, and got involved behind these students and gave them something that the others didn't have. So thank you again to all of that. And again, to all the elementary graders for graduation on high school. Again, they didn't get the normal send-off high school that they normally get, so we would like to obviously congratulate them. And also make comment to Hal Donovan, a longtime Clinton resident and very active resident in the community, passed away at the beginning of this week. But we would like to just send out our congratulations to his family. Lastly, on that note, the Park and Rec announced, I think it was today, that all the fields will be open. So if there's any other questions as relates to that, they're going to still have to follow protocol that was set forth by the state, but at least the fields are open. And if people have any questions or concerns or comments about, you know, the things that they need to follow, please contact the Park and Rec part. We will now move on to the proclamation. So Christine said we need to move on to another with a proclamation. So it was denied, it was going up. I responded to her email immediately for the next couple hours, and I wanted to talk to her further about this proclamation. One of the things that I wanted to discuss is this proclamation was going to be put forth under the guise of the town of Clinton. And I felt that for us as the Town Council members, we should be, the directive should have been maybe the Town Council putting together this. I mean, this was basically something that the chief ordered to us. Looks like it was a cut and paste component. Looks like it was a cut and paste from Clinton. It looks the same way that the county of Clinton had in their proclamation. And so it wasn't something that was denied. It wasn't something that was said that we weren't going to do. I had conversations with Carl. I had conversations with her. And we've had very good conversations about what we want to put forth as far as the town council goes. My issue and my concern was that this is a very highly debated topic. Everybody has an opinion, and every opinions matter just as much. So the difficult part is that, you know, coming, coming out of the box saying that this is what the town itself supports, you know, I just wanted clarification. That's what I asked for. I asked, my last response was I look forward to your response. I never got a response. And then, you know, tonight, we're going to post it to Facebook and make more comments about this and have this be posted on Facebook and make it like more political. Okay, I'm trying to avoid that. We're trying to come together as a group. We're talking about diversity. We're talking about solidarity. We're talking about unity. But yet, again, it's fighting with each other. Okay? And this council has had some other issues that I'm going to address as well as far as the communication goes because we've been, I've been dealing with emails and such that have been concerned about the communication that we have. This town council has done nothing different than any previous administration in this town's done. Okay, we just have a different form of government. Our current government now allows a town council with a chairperson. And every pastor, sattler, made comments to the public that had related to things and events that had happened in the town. Couple of weeks ago, when there were some issues at Clinton-Crofton, and they wanted to do the protest rally, I contacted the chief of police, asked them, you know, just making sure that they did it the right way because they did need to be permitted. During that conversation, this conversation turned to Clinton-Crofton. That's it. First of all, the police aren't going to make a comment about what was being discussed that happened in Clinton-Crofton because we don't do that. Okay? Then I started seeing more comments being made on Facebook and people were getting concerned. So I put out a comment. The town is aware of it, and we are going to, and there's precautions that were taken. That's it. Right, my comment? My comment came after a discussion with the chief of police about what we maybe should put out there. Carl then sent out an update to the town council on Thursday and Friday about the further happenings in town. Okay? So to send an email out and then, you know, why did the town council be made aware of these issues? Why isn't it being discussed with them? Well, everybody sort of knew in town what was going on. And quite honestly, that was a pretty simple comment on my behalf. I didn't commit to anything. But yet, you know, discussions about what I'm communicating to the town council. Yet Christine, you went out and posted to, to a party website for your reelection campaign about something happening in town. And that wasn't discussed with the council. So you're asking me to do certain things, yet you feel necessary to do whatever you want on the other side. That's not working together. I don't offer everybody on this town council the opportunity to speak. I accept politics aside. Okay? I at some point had disagreements with Marcus related to tax payments. Okay, I said it from the beginning and I'll say it again. I mean, I don't play the politics game. Everybody on this town council represents the town of Clinton. Okay? I understand that. Okay? So personal agendas, party agendas, you know, you know, we have council members showing up at meetings at the police station for what reason? I'm going to direct it with somebody that's out there. And I'm not going to go name calling. I'm not going to start pointing fingers. But this needs to stop because it's politics. I remember once that a proclamation was not going to be coming out. I remember once that it was denied. And I certainly didn't say, I don't care that the people on the front of Clinton, you know, have to say, which is what, you know, is put out there now that you actually, you know, presented your proclamation to people out there. Okay? I asked you for your feedback. I wasn't provided the feedback. Okay, and then everything gets put out there to the public, and then it turns into this. Okay, solidarity? Well, we're creating division here is what we're doing. We're not creating solidarity. We are the issue on our town council. So maybe let's start fixing that first, kind of the old union vice president who just represents the town of Clinton, and not make things better. I have no problem with that putting out a proclamation. Now, once did I say the word denied? Now, once did I say it wasn't going to happen? I had great conversations with her about what we can probably do to put something together. Okay, communications, open, transparent, pick up and call, text, respond to an email. That's what's going to move this town forward. Not finger pointing, not making things political. That's not what happened. I've said it from the beginning. I've never voted on any board commission that I've worked on, and I'm not going to do it on the town council because I'm a Republican. I'm going to vote because it's the town of Clinton that we're putting first. So please do not put words in my mouth and make accusations about what I've said. Okay, because it isn't right and it is accurate. And the email that I responded and asked for your feedback to me. Okay? This was a cut and paste from Clinton. I think we should be a little bit more, to be a little bit more specific to what town. How about start there? I'm tired, I'm tired of the politics. We're going down the wrong road here. Okay? We're here for the town of Clinton. I understand you have a different agenda because you're running for something different. Let's keep the council and the council, and we can do whatever else you need to do outside of the council. Because you're bringing it to what town, and it doesn't belong to our table. And I'll move on to the town manager's report.
You have my written report. So the only thing I would highlight in what I've given you in the report is the COVID reimbursement process that we're working through with the state. State has a waterfall of various programs you're supposed to reimburse through. Their thought process of having us go through FEMA first for the seventy-five percent. They use this new state program, picks up the other twenty-five percent. So at the end, the town net is one hundred percent covered on its expenses. So we're working through the process now. There's a dialogue going on with the Board of A to make sure that they're script way for their COVID-related expenses. Again, make note that CCM was going to have a virtual meeting that took place yesterday. And there was an update on what the special session could include. So what the state does with its budget. If you recall, the state can, did not get through the budget process, so they have to go into special session to at least approve the budget as amended by the governor. They also have deficit mitigation they also have to work on. But deficit mitigation is not anticipated to come out as a plan until the fall, which is a little late, if that's going to include hits to state grants and aid. So CCM is flagging that as an issue, looking for early announcements in terms of where the state may be going. The budget would have been the majority of it, but it looks like absentee ballot will be part of the discussion as well as the ongoing discussion around police accountability. Police Accountability Board has reported out its recommendations, so that likely will form its way into legislation to come out as it relates to municipal police departments in the special session. Beyond that, there's nothing else to report. Beyond, town hall will be opening for regular business starting on Monday of next week. We'll have the lines put in place and train patrol access points for foot traffic. But as Connecticut reopens, town hall will be reopening to normal public traffic starting next week. That's it.
Carl?
Yes?
May I ask some questions? Going back up about those reimbursements from the state and from whomever, the national government. Am I to assume that some of those improvements that we made to the town hall, like the plexiglass and stuff like that, will that be eligible expenses for us to put in?
Yes, so it's, what steps had to be taken in order to respond to COVID is the eligible expense. So what we put up at public service counters for plexiglass, the deep clean of the building, if you remember that back in March, extra PPE expenditures, things of that nature, those are all wrapped up in the nature of our expenses for COVID. So that would be part of what we'd be seeking reimbursement on.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, we move on to number nine, which is the town council committee liaison report. Is anybody that needs to or would like to report anything on any of the boards of commissioners they are liaison to?
Mr. Chairman, the police commission had a meeting a week ago, Monday. Things are moving along quite well with the police commission. I just wanted to say that I guess they sworn in another police officer. I guess that was to replace the vacancy by Sergeant Dunn's retirement. And the good news about it was, as we all know, the new officer was basically a transfer from another police department, AKA the state police. So it was very cost-effective for Clinton in that manner. We'd have to set him off to school and the lengthy expenses that go along with that. He does have to complete a couple of training sessions, and then he'll be ready to go. So that's about it for the police department there. As Sue had said, they're moving along on the budget. The only item that is concerned, of course, is the communications, and the chief and Carl are in constant contact with Sue, and they're all trying to work out something in that nature. Other than that, nothing else to report.
Thank you, Dennis. Anyone else?
Yeah, I attended an actual Public Works meeting last night. We were socially distanced, then had masks, but we all met in the same room. Yeah, it was a big deal. And their department is in excellent shape. They have used this relative downtime to do a lot of maintenance projects around town, which is pretty obvious to the, to the general public. I mean, they're, they're just doing phenomenal job. Todd has really done, really taken over the reins and is not only maintaining the path that Pete put in place, but he's also extending it and, and bringing in, taking on more projects than, that had been done in the past. And I think he deserves a lot of credit for doing a good job for this last year. Taking a look at their budget, they are currently in the black by a significant amount. They figure by the end of the year, they will still have a significant amount to return to the town. They understand the reasoning behind the truck that was cut, and they can live with the resources that they have for the interim. There was a big discussion about the transfer station and about the waste facility and waste management in Clinton. The costs involved that the town absorbs for the approximately five hundred families that use it. So that's a, that's a discussion that, that really should be front and center for a combined discussion between DPW and perhaps the council because whether to see if this is cost-effective or not to even maintain the services that we're maintaining now for the number of people that actually take advantage of it. And I think those are the significant points.
Okay, thank you.
This is Tim.
Okay, Tim.
I attended on June ninth, the EDC meeting. Really, the most significant issue was an apprenticeship program was presented to our state reps that would help our businesses in town find good help. I don't have any of the details of what the program entails, but they did say that it was presented. So they continue to look for ways to help businesses here in town find good help.
Thanks, Tim. Mary?
And? Hello?
What are you doing, Mark? Good?
Can anyone hear me?
Yep, you're good.
Okay, the Planning and Zoning Committee met on June eighth for its regular monthly meeting. The town consulting town planner been working with Indian River Landing to get state traffic requirements for permits and getting a demolition permit. He has also developed, working with vendor regulation amendments, including the addition of a seasonal outdoor use category. Kathy King was formally appointed the CEO beginning July first. And there is a, a Regulations Committee meeting on July first, which they will discuss proposed changes to the storage yards and other non-residential usage, discussion of possible amendments to transit-oriented development, overlay zoning, and the discussion of a seasonal outdoor dining. That's it.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I'd like to move on to make a, move on to executive session and invite Carl and Mary for personnel pursuant to CGS one dash two hundred six eighty.
And I will recuse myself from this portion of the meeting. I will leave and am not planning on coming back for the remainder. Is that acceptable?
Yes, that's fine.
Thank you. Have a nice evening, everybody.
Thank you, Carl.
We have a motion. There are motions. Somebody make a motion?
So I'll move.
Second?
Second. Aye.
Post? Same, okay. At this point, anybody who's on the call, if you go off, you're putting, you want to log back in, you'll be put into a waiting area. Wouldn't we come back if you would like to stay on? All right, we are back out of executive session. We're taking and no decision been made. At this point, we move on to number eleven, which is a motion to adjourn.
Moved.
Adjourn?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Stand? Thank you again, everybody. Have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Good night, all.